Okay.
Now we have a quorum.
Oh, I think I just got another text from Megan.
Look how pretty Catherine is.
Thank you, Mary Lou. Yeah, it's not letting her in. It's sign in to join, to sign, sign in to, yeah.
Tell her to come on over to my house.
She's in New Hampshire, unfortunately.
Oh, that won't work.
Can she call in? Even if she calls in, it's not working? I don't know. I'll ask her, do you want to call in?
Who else have we missing? Sarah said she couldn't come. Catherine O'Callaghan and Steve are both MIA. She has a hard time getting in. I texted her and she hasn't responded.
Okay, all right. Well, why don't we just go ahead and then if Megan can find a way in, then, then great. And if not, then we'll just make it quick. All right, so. All right, so 6:12. So for attendance, Carolyn Coffey?
Carolyn Coffey here.
Mary Lou Lawrence.
Mary Lou Lawrence here.
Elaine Breslow.
Elaine Breslow here.
Brooke Jewell.
Brooke Jewell here.
And Catherine Harvey here. All right, so first off, did everybody have a chance to look at the minutes from the last meeting?
Yeah, I actually don't remember seeing them.
Any, any comments, corrections, anything?
No.
Do I hear a motion?
So made, so approved.
To approve the, to approve the minutes. All right, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Minutes approved. Okay, so Director's Report, Megan.
I was so overwhelmed by that, wow.
Okay, excuse me. All right, we have been doing a lot of things. I feel like the slow up of COVID is over and we are full speed ahead, which is exciting. All of you have probably seen our new Friends book donation bin. So this bin's been put on the, the corner of our parking lot and has already been, it's been there for two weeks. And it's full about every four days, we have to go out and push the books back in the bin so that there's more space for people to put books in. This has been fantastic. The Friends get a certain amount of money per pound of the books that are put in this donation bin. So it's going to be great funding for the Friends and also kind of an easy upkeep of all of our donations that we've been receiving. Our fall hours will be back in swing soon, and that will be including Mondays. We have almost concluded our cataloging cleanup project, which is fantastic. So we will be opening on Sundays, starting September 12th, and then that would be Monday, September 13th. That will be our first Monday reopen as well. Our library of things has been relocated to the display case in the front of the building. And about three days after we did that, almost the entire shelf was empty, which is a great problem to have. So we were starting to think creatively about some of the things that we could put in the collection. And I think some of it, we took a little bit of a chance on, which is okay. So we bought a pickleball set, not the net, just the paddles and the balls, because I know that's starting to become a popular thing everywhere, but in Cohasset as well. We actually bought two basketballs because we have the new basketball court out back. We bought an outdoor movie blow up screen. So some outdoor movies might be coming up or football's starting again. People might want to watch their football game outside. We already have a projector, so that could be checked out as well, so that everybody can enjoy some movies outside. It's about, the size of it is fairly large, but it just blows up with a regular, you know, device that you would plug into the wall to blow up like a beach ball or a swimming pool as well. We purchased a record player, a giant Jenga. So it's like an outdoor Jenga set, ladder ball, which is an outdoor game as well. And we bought a vintage Nintendo console and it has the preloaded, like Mario, some of like the real old games. So just something fun and nostalgic. And we're open for other ideas as well, if anybody has them. But we're just trying to find things that are different and fun. Actually, one thing that I forgot on here is, it's called an air fort and it's a tent that just blows, it's an indoor fort slash tent that blows up and blows air into it. So it's something for like, you know, three-year-olds to six-year-olds. But just something fun to do inside.
Megan, did you say we have a record player?
Yes, we just got it.
Does it play the big LPs?
I believe so. You might have to come and take a look at it. I don't really know the difference between records, different kinds of records.
Okay, probably 33.
It's not large.
Oh, okay.
It's not large in size. I would say it plays a smaller record. We received a grant from the MBLC. So the MBLC received a grant from the American Emergency Relief Act. And what they did was purchase a massive amount of hotspots for public libraries. And the idea is, for the first year, the 10 hotspots are free of charge. We got the devices for free and the service is free for the next year for all 10 devices. And after that, we can make a choice if we just want to activate one of the devices, you know, for a couple of years. But the idea is if there is an emergency, or if, you know, the town of Cohasset has a weather emergency, we can go ahead and activate all 10 hotspots very quickly. So moving forward, if there's connectivity problems, the library can aid the communities depending on what the situation is in spreading the hotspots. Something that we had to opt in for, which we did. So we are canceling our current hotspot service because it doesn't make sense to be charged when we have a whole year free. Again, those are devices that we're keeping and that we can reactivate if we want to or if there's an emergency. The Building Committee met and we went through a lot of questions that I had, which I really appreciate, and formulated a lot of ideas for some opportunities that we had for some change. We needed a new space for the Friends storage. The closet in the staff area really needs to be used at this point for staff supplies. So we decided to put the Friends storage space back up. When you go up to Safe Harbor to the right, there's a, it's like a, it's a walk-in closet type storage area. So we're going to start putting their items up there, their books for the book sale for now. But I do foresee that starting to evolve a little bit differently. We talked about the coffee station. We do think it's time for now to remove the, the coffee station. The good news is it's something that we can install right back in if we want to. But for now, to have a public coffee area, just, it's a little bit of wasted space and people aren't really using it. And it's just not a great time for self-serve stations at this time. We're going to revisit study room artwork, but this, both the study rooms were repainted. The whiteboards in there are, we don't know how often they're used, but we do know that they are creating a real mess on the walls of kind of that black soot that comes from the markers. I do think that the study rooms were painted recently, a little bit before I started as the Director, and they already need to be repainted and we were closed for a year. So it really just makes the room look dirty. So we're hoping to kind of find another solution there and maybe find some artwork for the study rooms instead. Let's see, the outdoor space, we're just starting to talk about maybe what the process might be moving forward with the outdoor space. I did talk to Russ Benetti and Chris Senior about the idea of having an outdoor space. They are both supporting it. So we're just starting to formulate some next steps on how we can get that moving forward, hopefully for next year or the year after. Carpet at the old reference desk is something that we continue to work on. We did remove some of the soffit lettering. Lettering that said audio visual was no longer in the right spot. It was over kind of our couches and chairs in our welcoming area. And we removed the words audiobooks as well off the soffit. And there's a ticket into facilities for them to patch and repaint some of that area. And lastly, we just talked about, we went through, Sharon, myself and Megan D. all went through and spray painted on the grass where we would like the story walk posts to be posted. So the group all walked through that to make sure this is in line with what we were all thinking. And we also had some additional ideas about how to begin and end the story walk. And lastly, I applied, I signed the library up to be part of the Chamber of Commerce for the year. I just want to test out if this is a good fit for us to start meeting some new folks in town and be part of maybe a different organization. I knew they did some interesting programming, or not programming. They did some interesting events last year in, in the wake of the, of COVID. So I'm just exploring to see if this is a good avenue for us to make some new partnerships. And just side items, I'm finishing up on the financial and the heiress report. And the recreation center in, at 55 South Main is opening on September 8th. So I'm working on that a little bit here and there, too.
Megan, could I just interject for one second since you're finishing up? We've got two on the phone. Do you have to let them in? Because Megan Brynsey and Catherine O'Callaghan are both on the phone. I don't know if they can just hear us by calling in or if you have to admit them.
Let's see, I can let Catherine Callahan in. I'm sorry, you could have totally interrupted me. I cannot let Manny and Brynsey in on the phone.
Hey, I'm here. I'm sorry, I just can't do my video.
That's okay. Thanks for coming. So Megan Brynsey can hear us, but we, I can't promote her from attendee.
Okay, well, as long as she can hear us. Sorry, Megan.
Sorry, Megan.
Okay, so, anyhow, I'm sorry, was that everything, Megan?
Yes, that's all that I have.
Okay, so then we're on to the bills. Ronwyn?
I'm sorry about that. I'm quickly adding the new attendees in before I forget. Our bills this month, actually Catherine's already signed the warrant because I wanted to get them in, it was supposed to be in last week's meeting. So we just need everybody to also approve them. We've got basically, well, you can see there's the barking dog, which is the story walk bill. That's one of our biggest bills. And that is partially paid for by Cultural Council Grant. So once the bill is paid and everything's installed, then we can go back to them to get reimbursed on that.
Ronwyn, is that why it's in the gift account?
Yes, so we pay it out of the gift account so that we can easily just put the funds back in once they are repaid, same as the museum pass.
Yeah, I wondered about that. So the story walk was a cultural council grant?
It's the Cultural Council and the Friends.
And the Friends, okay. Sorry, I didn't remember. I was, when I saw that, I was trying to figure out, you know, normally when we get a grant, a separate account is set up for it and everything. So now that answers my question.
Some of the, some of the local grants that we get, they want us to pay for the, whatever it is, if it's a program or, you know, whatever we want, we want the money for, and then show that we ran the program or show that we purchased what we said we were going to, and then they reimburse us.
That's how Cultural Council does it. You have to have it first and then get reimbursed.
Yeah. They did a couple of programs that Megan D. ran and it was that, that sort of system. And then the museum passes we pay out of the gift account because the Friends pay all at once at the end of the year. So I just keep counting, you know, keep a running tally and then give them a statement at the end of the year. And then that just goes back and reimburses the gift account. So it's just an easier way than trying to have the town pay for things and then reimburse the town and that sort of thing. So it seems to work pretty well. That's, and that's how we do it. And then the only other thing that's, I wouldn't say that unusual, but different is the technology line has Centrum Sound Systems, which is a new wireless microphone that Sharon needed for some of her programming. So that's what that charge is for. Does anybody have questions? Other than that, I think we've got another donation. We actually, another CLT donation came in today from, or the other day, from Barbara Power that I deposited today. So we really got on about $3,000 in her memory, which is really fantastic. And then Mary Grayken gives us an annual gift and this year was $1,000, so. We're doing pretty well, yeah. Yeah, very nice about Barbara. People in the community really wanted to remember her that way, so. That's all I have, I think, unless anyone has questions about specific bills or anything.
Motion to approve the bills.
Seconded?
Second.
All right, we do a voice vote for bills, right? So, okay. Brooke Jewell?
Yes.
That works, yeah.
You're in the lineup, so I know what to say.
You're on my left most side on my screen. Mary Lou Lawrence?
Aye, Mary Lou.
Carolyn Coffey?
Carolyn Coffey, aye.
Elaine Breslow?
Elaine Breslow, aye, and yes.
Catherine O'Callaghan? Can you hear me, Catherine?
You're muted. She's muted.
Catherine O'Callaghan, aye.
And Catherine Harvey, aye. I would ask Megan, but I know that we can't hear her, so I'm not going to ask her. Anyway, so the motion carries to approve the bills. Okay, so I am next on the Chair's Report, which I really don't have much to report on, except for the Building Committee meeting, which Megan already went through in some detail. The only thing that I wanted to mention, this is not really library specific, but I'm sure some of you are following with interest the whole mask mandate debate. And someone I know on another board mentioned recently how it's such a deterrent to people to step forward and get involved in town government because of the beating that you can take on social media and how the discourse makes it really unappealing. And it, I think, leaves people who might otherwise have the energy to get involved reluctant to do so. And I only mention it because, you know, the school committee is taking a beating and the Board of Health is taking a beating online. And, you know, if you ever happen to see something where you can just step in and remind people who are angry or upset that the people who are making these decisions are by and large volunteers who are trying to serve the community. I think it's always nice to contribute that to the conversation when you can because, you know, we're never going to agree, especially, you know, in these times. But, you know, even people who I don't agree with, I still appreciate the fact that they're making the contribution to the community. And I think that people forget that that's really how decisions are made. So I just wanted to say that. You know, I try to pitch in and back people up when I can. But it's, you know, it's scary to even say something neutral, to be honest. So anyway, I just wanted to say that. But other than that, I have nothing to report on.
Just to back you up on that, we had a emergency management, you know, end of emergency meeting, which actually turned into like, maybe beginning of a new emergency meeting. But it was all the department heads in town that had worked through COVID. And one thing that was brought up was how difficult it was with social media to try to, you know, maybe just hold up the decisions of some of the boards and how, you know, there were also town employees that were attacked pretty, in a tough way as well. So, you know, that was discussed at our meeting on how difficult that made managing the emergency.
Yeah, it's, I think it's, yeah, it just, it makes people reluctant to say their views or to take an opposite view or to get involved. And so, anyway, if you ever have an opportunity to throw somebody a lifeline, you know, you can do it and still stay neutral on the, you know, whatever the topic of discussion is, I guess. So, okay, so next is CLT. Carolyn, do we have anything to report on that?
Yeah, the CLT met last week. And the, the balance of the endowment is $2.2 million now. There's been 30% growth in the last two years. There was a lot of discussion apparently at the Investment Advisory Committee meeting about the allocation of the various investments. And, you know, at this point, equities have become 85% of the total portfolio. They have in the past targeted 80%, but because they've grown so much, it's a larger portion. So there's some talk of reallocation. And, and then they also were looking at the fundamentals of US investments versus international and emerging markets investments. And long story short, after much discussion, decided that they wanted to shift the investments from 36% domestic equities to 44%, even though the valuations are a lot higher here. And arguably, we could be top ticking the market. They felt that from a long-term investing strategy, the US fundamentals were strong and this is where they wanted the money to be. So there was a lot of discussion. There were a lot of alternate opinions expressed, but they coalesced around that. So the Board heard the report and, and accepted that, that suggestion. So there will be some moving around of monies. And the exciting thing is, I can't remember if this, I said this in the last meeting, we got an unsolicited $8,000 gift in memory of a long-term patron of the library. I met with his daughter who was passing through town. She lives in Richmond, I think toward the end of July, and showed her around the library, showed her the plaque. She handed me a check and we now have, we got the plaque updated. So it now says, "In memory of John J. Delaney III", and we also were able to recognize the $10,000 gift that Patience and Rick Toll gave a couple of years ago because the plaque hadn't been updated for that either. I also brought up, as I think I mentioned to you all, the fact that the Caroline Blanton Thayer Trust has given $9,000, $10,000 donations. And people were favorably inclined, should a 10th one come in, to recognizing the trust in the philanthropist category, which is the $100,000 category. And, you know, if, if they are amenable, if the trustee is amenable to it, you know, publicizing it, writing a story, why do they do this, you know, what's, what's the story? Jen Anubene agreed to, to write a story. So that could be a nice publicity opportunity and maybe put the idea in people's heads that, you know, this is a nice way to recognize people with memorial donations and that sort of thing. So, so that was our, that was our meeting.
Great. And the Friends have not met. We're off for the summer. So, I mean, the big development, obviously, just being that the book, book bin has been delivered. And I know it's filling up all the time. So that's good news. And, yeah, and still do as much recruiting for us as you can. And that's about it for the Friends, so.
Catherine, is it more economical for you to, for the Friends, to get the per-pound rate for the books or to sell the books for a dollar or a quarter in the community center? Which way do you make more money?
Oh, definitely with the book bin. Well, we, we think it's going to be the book bin. I mean, obviously, we haven't seen the bottom line yet, but the other libraries who we spoke to, Beth, I guess it was Barbara, spoke to somebody from Lincoln and they were getting a lot more. I mean, I think we get like, like $200 a month if we're lucky, like between $150 and $200 a month from our book sale. And they were getting, I don't know, like, I think, I want to say, was it 700 or 800, Megan?
I was going to say, I thought it was about 1,000.
Yeah, it's dramatically, dramatically more. Now, I think Lincoln also has more bins, though. I want to say they have three, where we only have the one right now. But I, I think it's, it's going to be much more lucrative going through Bay State books than, than just doing art. But I, I think, so the idea is to keep the, the ongoing book sale going in the community room, but to improve the inventory because we can also get inventory from Bay State books so that we can go, say, quarterly, go to his warehouse and choose books that we want to then bring back and put in the book sale. And so then we can sort of balance out the inventory a little bit better. You know, because we tend to get a lot, you know, a lot of.
Because of the crap. I, sorry, I should have been worse. I have a box of books upstairs, but I think, and I think they're sellable books. And I don't know if I should just put them in the bin or give them to you.
Well, we actually, we're a little low on inventory right now, Carolyn's. How much, is it just one box?
Yeah.
You know, what, why don't, we'll take that into the library and put it on the shelves.
You can look at it and see if you, if you think they're saleable or not. And then we can just dump anything in the bin.
Yeah, just shoot me a text when you're around tomorrow and I'll come get them. That'd be great. Thank you very much. So, anything else?
I just wanted to say, I don't know if you've talked about it, but great kudos on July's activities and all the programs. Just fantastic. I mean, I don't think we've ever done anything that big in just one month.
Yeah, I mean Sharon Moody and Megan DeMiano, they, they're a great team and they can, they think quickly and they're dynamic.
Gail's no longer involved because some of that was craft after dark and.
Those are, yes, those are, so our biggest numbers came from children's, but our programs are doing fantastic, too. So, yeah, I'm really proud of the work that they've done. And they've had to pivot very quickly and they've had to, you know, change their plans. And they really wanted a.
1,600 people passed through to, yeah, yeah. Wonderful, wonderful.
Here, here.
Thank you.
All right, well, if there is nothing else, then do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second. If you want to stay for lessons, Carolyn's going to give a lesson right now on how to get onto Zoom. She's already given me one, but I threw away the paper because I thought I knew it.
There's obviously something going on with the link because, you know, don't, don't be hard on yourself. You know, other people had trouble. No, seriously.
You're so kind.
Yeah, no, it doesn't, it doesn't recognize me anymore. So I don't, I don't, yeah, I don't know what it is. So I, it used to be I could just click through and then I would be in the room. But now when I click on, Zoom doesn't know, doesn't know my, you know, I don't have a Zoom account with my, my email address that you have, that you sent me the link, where you sent me the link. I have a Zoom account on a different email address, on a Gmail address. But when I go in with my, the one that you send me the link to, it, well, it just doesn't know who I am. And I can't sign in using that email address because I don't have it, uh, Zoom. So I guess I just need to get a Zoom account with that, a free account with that address. I don't. No, you're not supposed to need one. Right. That's, that's exactly it. But, and.
Especially because you're all supposed to be a panelist, but we circulate the attendees link and then we promote everybody, which isn't quite the way to do it, but we found that it was the least confusing way, because otherwise we have two separate links floating around. Um, but what I'm trying to say is, so the attendee link is supposed to be the one that lets everybody in. And the panelist one is supposed to be the one that's a little bit more complicated. So I don't know.
How much longer are we going to be doing Zoom?
It's a great question, Mary Lou. At, for the, yeah, for a while. Um, so I know that the town is working on installing, uh, tech equipment into Willcut Commons so that we can start doing hybrid meetings. Um, but that is the only space in town that's being equipped with that technology. Um, and I don't know how they're going to decide who gets to meet hybrid and who doesn't. Um, there's been talk about purchasing an owl, uh, camera. I don't know if you're all familiar, but it's something that, um, it sits on a table and essentially follows people's voices and it'll pan around the table depending on who's talking. Um, and people have been actually utilizing too for larger groups. Um, so that's a technology we've looked into for programming, but for right now, the town's not approving it for public meetings. That might change, but for right now, um, they're only going to be authorizing this technology in Willcut Commons.
Well, what about the other departments? Do, does anyone else have trouble getting on or just a couple of your trustees?
Um, I, I mean, I haven't heard anything specifically, to be honest, but I know that, you know, we have, Gail will have programs or Kristen will have programs and people have trouble getting in here and there too. So, um, I'm not hearing really an uproar from other town departments that there's an issue. But I do know that, um, Elder Services, the Board of for Elder Services would really like to meet in person. Um, and I have heard that, um, and I don't know, maybe that's because they are also having trouble getting onto Zoom. I haven't really heard the reason besides maybe that they're just interested in meeting in person.
I mean, Robin has no trouble with the Board of Health and I was so frustrated tonight and I said, I can't do this. I can't do this. And he said, well, let me see what you're doing. He said, I can't help you. I can't help you. That's what he said.
Um, I don't know what to say. I mean, we, uh, maybe plan to, you know, I mean, just because the town's not he, um, holding the meeting as a hybrid, doesn't mean you can't all, you know, go to each other's houses and you can do your own hybrid version. Um, you know, you could plan for that maybe. That's helpful. Um, but for right now, my, my hands are tied on how, what we can do. But they can't feel you that you can't meet together. So.
It's a good point. All right. Well, I guess we'll just have to keep trying. So, all right. Well, with that, I guess we are adjourned.
Okay.
So, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Megan.
Thank you.